Sandy was gonna try to call in, but if I see her pop up, we'll recognize her. Are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's start with a roll call, please.
Sandy. Reagan. Can you hear? Kristi. I'm here. Joanne Shurkey. Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, well. We're all here except for Sandy so far. If this doesn't get better, this is gonna be a definite challenge as far as the audio. Bills payable, we have bills payable on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Yes?
Can you hear me? I make motion to pay the bills in one thousand six hundred and seventy-six hundred and sixty-one dollars and cents.
Okay, we have a motion from Joanne.
Support.
And we have support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark. Kristen.
Yes.
Chris Reagan. Sandy Valentine. Yeah. And Shurkey.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, did we go through? This is very difficult today. It looks like the motion passed. Am I sounding chop up to you guys?
No.
I'm not sure if you guys are hearing me or not. I'm gonna go ahead with the supervisor's report. Um. High water. Report, we do have high water. I'm gonna go ahead and mute everybody right now during my report, then I'll unmute you. When we're done. So maybe that will help. Current status, high water. I just checked it, and the Algonquin at the water gauge were five seventy-eight point one above sea level, which is about two inches above where we were at our last meeting. We had a wind event, wind and storm, rain event last week, I think Thursday. Wednesday night, Thursday, and we did hit five seventy-eight point four, which was pretty much a wreck, equaled our high watermark ever. And it was a challenge. Four in the morning, we had lots of roads underwater. And. But we're. Fortunately, the water did recede fairly quickly. The county road was out, taking care of all kinds of roads and ditches, and it's a challenge every time. The new forecast from the Army Corps of Engineers, it's looking like we're at our peak. Hopefully, they're right. And boy, we needed to start either maintaining or dropping off. I mean, I'm worried about right now. I mean, we're at five seventy-eight point one. We have an east wind blowing, which would really artificially lower it some. Enforcement's going okay on the river. The St. Clair County Sheriff Patrol boats is out, and our own police boat. I'm constantly getting complaints. Oh, we don't see anybody. We don't see anybody. But in perspective, we have about forty-five miles of roads in the township, and we'll have two, three cars patrolling all times. And. As far as water, we have a hundred and forty miles ashoreline. So, and we have, you know, basically two boats at best, sometimes one. So, you know, we do the best we can. We still are selling sandbags to our residents that cost us eighteen dollars per hundred. And we have them in our office. So all you gotta do, come to the office and. And we have them for you. COVID-19 report, I believe we have nineteen active cases in the township. And the numbers in the county are definitely getting better. The COVID-19 grant that the DDA is doing is going pretty well. I actually hand-delivered about eight or ten applications today. I'm planning on hand-delivering everybody an application. And. See if it. You know, we can help some of these businesses out. They're very glad we're doing it. And I mean, you walk in some businesses, they really don't spend a lot of money or anything. And. They're just appreciative of any help that we can give them. Uh, let's see. I was talking to people at First Community Health, the old Downriver Medical Center, they're still doing the COVID-19 testing. They're down about thirty a week, which is pretty good. I mean, anybody who wants to get tested can get tested. And. Alls you gotta do is call and get an appointment. Donations are going well for the Algonquin Food Pantry. And we do have, and the monthly food giveaway that's been happening has been going very well. And I'll be quite honest, we received some grants through Algonquin Live and the St. Clair County Community Foundation. We're funded to the end of the summer. So if people wanna help, they can still help the Algonquin Food Pantry, but I'm telling you, we don't need any more money, thank God, for this food giveaway that we're doing. I'm telling people, save your money, go spend it at a local business, because those are the people that need help. And. So that's a good thing. That's a very good thing. I think our next one, I gotta look. I'll put it out there. We're gonna have one here towards the end of this month, and they go better towards the end of the month for some reason. So, the township offices, we are open to the public. Trying to limit the lobby to four people at a time. And we are, you know, we're open from eight to six, and we are closing at noon, from noon to one. That gives us a chance to sanitize the lobby, and it helps out pretty good trying to keep everyone safe. And we, our Dropbox is still open and are going good. If people wanna come in, they can utilize our Dropbox. All right, township office, the music in the park, we got that going. Thank you, Cindy Babish and everybody else. And we're in the city of Algonquin now. It's been going great, very well attended. Lots of people with smiles there. They all say it's great to see people. And Splash Pad is also open, and that also has been going well. And. People are enjoying themselves. Um, today was a very good day this morning. We closed on the beach property. The beach park property was closed this morning from Stillson. If you remember right, how it is, Six River Conservatory actually stepped in, why, and is holding it for St. Clair County until we, we get the money from the grant, which takes about a year, year and a half. So that, this allows us to make the deal happen, and it is closed. And we're working on another piece of property that's adjacent, and we actually had talks to a third property that's adjacent that are, is interesting and selling and having that property become part of the park. So that's very, it's a very big step. This is. Been working on this for eight years. And. Very happy about it. And we're gonna be looking forward, working with the county to get it developed into a first-class park going forward. My mine is gonna be one of our jewels that's going to be in place for years and years and years to come for people to. Been doing some work on our saw grant, our one point one million dollar saw grant. They're in full swing. They're doing a lot of the sewer cleanings and checking out the sewers right now. If you see a sewer vac truck in your street, I just wanna remind you, we send out a mailer, but everyone doesn't read them about. When they're doing that, you'll hear your toilet rumble, and we suggest you shut the lid. Your toilet's not gonna explode. It just makes that noise for a while when they're doing the cleaning on the sewer system. And. Let's see, our cleanup, township cleanup weekend is June twenty-seventh. It's the mainland behind the water station, starting at eight. And that's the Saturday, and on the weekend, or on Hurstens Island, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, both days, at Brown's Field. And, yep, Joby Newers coming up in two weeks, June twenty-second or twenty-sixth, which is an unsanctioned event. And it will be happening, so, like it or not. And as far as the rec, rec programs, we're getting them back online and and going on, and a lot of the announcements will be coming with that very shortly. And that's all I have right now. I go ahead and unmute everybody. Could you guys understand me? Off my wireless, maybe this will help.
Artie, I'm in the media audio.
Artie, you're pretty clear. Everybody else is.
Okay. Well, I just hardwired, connected hardwire too, so I actually have two internet connections. Well, that's good to know. I'll. I'll keep going. So next thing, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments right now?
So everyone, and they're muting themselves, just so everybody knows.
Right. Right. Do we have any public comments? You'll have to unmute yourself if you're muted, or wave your hand, or.
I also wanted to point out that trustee Kufel has joined our meeting.
Oh, okay. I'd like to chair, we'll recognize Sandy Kufel as being in attendance. Thank you. Okay, any public comments? Not seeing any. My cellphone's going. Not seeing any. Okay, moving right along the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consistent of the board meeting of June first, twenty twenty. Check reports, the person wrecked. Day for June twenty twenty. Notice, July second for the Fourth of July observance, road much, and a letter of retirement from dispatch your Pat McCorny, effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Pull up for it.
We have motion and support. Any discussion or anything on that? Not seeing anything. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. I'm sure it's got going on.
You have to unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, Mark.
You can also vote, vote like this.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can go to reactions and hit your your thumbs up button, too. All right. Consent agenda is passed. And our new business.
That was trying.
First thing we have is the St. Clair County Parks and Rec, the local millage distribution.
Unmute me. You are unmuted. You have to unmute yourself, Mark. If you click on your picture.
You have to unmute yourself, Mark.
All work.
I'm sorry, what?
Gotta go down to the bottom of the thing.
Mark can't get himself unmuted.
Oh, goodness.
Okay, Mark, you have to unmute yourself. The lower left button, yours, mute, unmute. Make sure there's no red line through it.
It ain't working. You have him call on his cellphone. Sorry, this is Kelly.
Yeah, you can call it on your cellphone.
Artie.
Yeah.
Artie, you have phone numbers down at the bottom. You probably know that.
Yeah.
Give them a number to call.
Yeah, and the email, there's a a number. I can text it to people here, maybe if I can.
I think if you click on your video camera, that little arrow, it'll give you some numbers to give up.
Okay.
You're the host, right?
Yeah.
His mouth never moves.
Sometimes the video. The video's clearer. I mean, the cellphone's clearer, but they have to turn off their, mute their video.
Right. Think what. I'm okay, I think, because we have fiber picked up in here, and everybody else is on Comcast, and that's making it more challenging, so.
I think we lost Mark.
He's probably gonna try to reconnect. So.
Oh, he's down the corner.
All right.
He's back on, but he's.
Well, you know what? If it gets video, you can do a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Hey, first thing, we got a lot to go through the agenda. Our local millage distribution request, this is for our money for Parks and Rec. We have to approve this. And. So we can get our money from our Parks and Recs, which is forty-one thousand and ninety-eight dollars. So.
I'll make a motion to approve local millage distribution request for twenty twenty in the amount of forty-one thousand ninety-eight dollars.
Okay. We have motion and support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
I sent the county.
Who's talking?
Chrissy.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I did send this to the county for them to look at proof, or we brought it to the board, and he said it looked good.
Yeah. Any questions I missed?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yeah, Arden.
What are you looking for?
You.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris Reagan. Chris Reagan. Sandy Kufel.
Yeah.
Mark Char. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, I just wanna let everybody know, too, for the, this next operating, it's actually going up a little bit to forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. So.
I just saw that, too.
Yeah, I just wanna let everybody know. Okay, number two, resolution twenty twenty oh five, set the annual salary for the supervisor. Entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve twenty twenty oh five, setting the annual salary for the supervisor, which has no change.
Support.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. So the resolution basically says forty-two thousand, it's zero increase on the salary. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris Reagan. Sandy Kufel.
Yeah.
Mark Char. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed. Motion passed. Next, we have the resolution, set the annual salary for the clerk, which is forty-two thousand dollars with no increase. I will make that a motion. Looking for support.
Support.
Yeah, motion is support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Where I started now.
Me.
Kristi Hilton. Yeah. Chris Reagan.
He says yes.
Sandy Kufel. Mark Char.
Thumbs up.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, motion, or motion passes. Next, resolution twenty twenty oh seven, set annual salary for the treasurer. And that again is the same as the other two with no increase. I will entertain a motion.
Chris Reagan. Sorry.
Right. I'll tell you what, that is a motion. I'll, looking for support for, accept the resolution for the treasurer's salary. Support, we have support. Any discussions?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Chris Reagan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yeah.
Mark Char. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Right on.
Okay, we do the trustees. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty oh eight, set the annual salary for the trustees. That is at five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And that does represent, all the rest of them represent a three percent increase. I will make that a motion, that I move that we accept the resolution for the annual salary for the trustees.
Support.
Party.
We do have support. Any discussion? I just wanna reiterate, this is, all these is being reflected into the budget, so they're all accounted for in the upcoming budget, so. Roll call vote, please.
Kufel.
Yeah.
Mark Char. Joanne.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes. Motion passes.
Kristi Hilton and Chris Reagan.
Yep. Okay, next is the the stipend for the FOIA coordinator, which will be two thousand and seventy-five dollars, and that's a three percent increase. Well, that's the motion. I move that we pass resolution twenty twenty oh nine for the salary for the FOIA coordinator, coordinating stipend. Do I have support? Chris Reagan supports.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? A call for a vote. Roll call.
Mark Char. Joanne Shurkey. Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Krista Reagan.
He's got a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty ten, set the annual deputy stipend for the, I believe this is for the clerk, right?
It's for the deputies, and it's also for the deputy clerk for us.
Gotcha.
Cost an additional two hundred and fifty dollars. We've
Right, I see that, so.
They might be able to hear you better.
So I motion that we pass a resolution twenty ten, set the annual deputy stipend. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support.
Okay, we have support. Hearing, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Me.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton. Thumbs up. Krista Reagan.
Thumbs up.
And a thumbs up. Sandy Kufel. Sandy Kufel. Mark.
Motion. Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty eleven, to set the parks and recs stipend, and I will make that a motion that we accept the resolution for the parks and recs stipend. And this also represents a three percent increase. Do I have support? Crystal Reagan supports. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Krista Reagan. Sandy Kufel.
Yeah.
Char, thumbs up. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a resolution twenty twelve, twenty twenty twelve, to adjust the sewer rates. Basically, it represents a five percent increase. I'm planning, as part of the SAW grant, of doing a in-depth rate analysis going forward the next twenty years. And also, it we are going to have some challenges in our sewer system. Our main interceptor it needs a lot of work. I'm guessing some to the tune of three or four million dollars. We're going to get more information on that here in the next month. So right now, I'm, I'm not me, but we're suggesting a five percent increase. And I would like to also remember, remind everybody that the water is not going up, hasn't gone up for a year or two on that side. But unfortunately, we're forced to do an increase on the sewer rates. Is John DeBoyer on?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
I'm here, Artie.
All right, if we have any questions, John's on. And
Can you hear me?
Yes, very good. Thank you.
I can hear you very good.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion at this point, so we can talk about it if we have any discussion.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, resolution twenty twenty twelve, to adjust sewer rates. Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Oh, this is frustrating. I'm pretty sure I'm not hearing any discussion. So I'll do a roll call, please.
Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Krista Reagan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel. Sandy Kufel. Mark Bouchard.
Yeah.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Cindy Valentine.
Whoops.
That's okay. You're good.
All right, next, item ten, to set the public hearing for the township budget. It'll be six thirty, June thirtieth, at three P M at the township hall, and that will be in person, not one of these Zoom meetings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that motion.
We have motion and support. Yep, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have to reschedule our July sixth, twenty twenty meeting to June thirtieth, twenty twenty at three P M also.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to reschedule our July sixth meeting to June thirtieth. And we have
I'll support that motion.
Okay, we have support.
Joanne's supportive.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion on that?
Gotcha.
Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, we have DPW, we've been working on this, John DeBoyer's been doing a lot of work on this, to get some new water meters and move this up to the current century. And we do have a couple people in the audience, too, I believe, that I can recognize, but you want to go ahead and take it away, John?
Sure. So I'm proposing that we purchase an AMI radio read system, which would consist of three collectors or three antennas that would be placed strategically throughout township. And this would give us the ability to read the computer rate from the office. The system operates on a four hundred and fifty and also a nine hundred megahertz radio band. And I looked at a few different companies. Obviously, the price and things, we looked at options and features and user friendliness, and we narrowed it down to this company. So the first, the company is Camstruck. They also had some good references from some other communities throughout the, not only Michigan, but in other states. But a couple of our close neighbors, Ira Township and also the city in Baltimore, use this system. They've been on it for the last three years, and they're very happy with it, basically zero complaints. Just a couple of quick points. The township hasn't done a meter change in approximately twenty five plus years. So we're overdue as far as the life of a water meter. So now, so we're basically killing two birds with one stone by engineers, but also it's ready to reset them. It's going to be a big man hour saver. Also, the girls in the office, it will save a lot of time. So there's just a lot of benefits to it. Proposing that we break this over a four-year period, we purchase a front cost, which would consist of our software, meter reading equipment, that type of thing, and then also purchase some in this current fiscal year, which we budgeted for. And then basically, what it would be over the next three years remaining would be just purchasing water meters in the upcoming budget that we just concluded. So I'm proposing that we purchase the system and the radio readers this year, and then the remaining over the next three. And we go with Camstruck Meter Company. Chris Johnson is the rep, and I believe he's with us tonight. Are you out there, Chris?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
So if anybody's got any questions on, I hear you, Chris. If anybody's got any questions on this, Chris is the technical guy. He can answer.
Hi, Chris, thanks a lot. Sorry we have to meet like this. Artie Bryson, the supervisor, speaking. One question I had, and I have the answer, but just for everyone's information. I don't want to, you know, when you do this, these types of agreements, you always have a maintenance fee. And I like that the cost structure of this system works, makes sense. And we compare it to Master Meter, I'm sure you're aware of them, your competition. And they have a lower cost to get into it initially, but their maintenance, annual maintenance system is a lot higher per month. I did ask John, you know, to, okay, you say you're locking us in on this maintenance agreement for three years. We know year four, year five, you know, it doesn't jump way up. But they did answer the question in a letter where it it will go up, you know, by the CPI, whatever the CPI is, or five percent max. Is that right? Chris?
Yes, it is. The basic, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So on the letter there, we've worked with Camstruck on that, and the first three years would be all the proposal, and then the years four, five are that CPI will, and that's what we'd expect if there is an increase.
Okay.
Which is pretty much industry centered.
Okay, and they also gave me a estimate. This is going to save us money, as I say, the township in a couple ways. It's going to save us a lot of man hours. It's going to, it's going to average, it saves about a hundred and fifty-five man hours per month of out in the field reading meters. It's going to save us about a hundred and twenty hours a month internally processing the water bills. And we're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month savings total. And then also, we're going to have more up-to-date and accurate water meters, which usually means like, if a water meter starts to go bad, it actually doesn't measure all the water that's going through it, so it will probably save us on water loss within the whole system. Am I pretty correct on that, John?
Yeah, yeah, our older meters are probably in the between a fifteen percent loss rate. So we're going to see that water loss hopefully significantly.
So what's the annual, what's the expected life on these meters?
Twenty years. The life on the meter is twenty years.
Twenty years. Okay, so the way I'm figuring out, you know, the savings is going to pay for the, these meters, the savings for the wire department, they will pay for themselves within eight to ten years. Pretty good fair estimate?
Yeah, maybe a little quicker than that, Artie.
Could be a little quicker, but I like to be conservative.
John, can you hear me?
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, John, is that basically a man hour savings, or is it a combination of man hours and water rates savings?
The it's combined, Mark. Probably two hundred and twenty dollars. It's a combination of girls in the office.
I'm not sure if you heard him, it's a combination.
I can tell you that other than it's combined, that's all I want to know. Yeah, I know it's a combination now, but I'd like to know a percentage of it, but regardless, the audio here is not going to happen.
I'm sorry. But yeah, it's, my point too, is in the long run, it's going to save the, I know it's an expense upfront. It's going to save the township money in the long run, plus it will make it more user friendly. People can log on, see exactly what their water rate is. We can, you can almost tell when people are watering their lawn. Yeah, two thirty in the afternoon, your sprinklers are going on and off. It's a big, if all of a sudden somebody has a lot, a huge water increase, it will flag us. So someone has a broken pipe. It will flag us, we'll get a report in the morning, hey, this house, there's an issue. So we can call up the owner, we can go and inspect it to see if there's any broken pipes or anything along those lines. There's a lot of advantages to the system. Go ahead. Anyone want to add on to that? That being said, and just to keep things moving along, I would like to make a motion that we accept the proposal from Hydro Corp. as presented and move forward with a new meter system. Do I have support?
Support it.
We have support?
Yeah, support.
Okay, any discussion, questions? I know we've talked about this before. Kind of a big deal, so I want to make sure we're all on the same page. It's the board. Is everybody comfortable with?
I just want to say representing the Treasury Department.
Say it again, Chrissy. Say it again, Chrissy.
I was, I was just going to say that, that I support this 100%. I think it's going to be amazing for the office.
It will definitely streamline everything. Do we have any more discussion? And this is going to start in this current budget year and then also the next two, two budget years going forward. And we're, we're paying for this. I want this to be important too. We're paying for it this without an increase of our water rates, but we're paying for it within the budget process. So that being said, this is, this is a well worked out plan, I believe.
I would like to make a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is such a good thing for us, for the township. I would like to have us give another discussion at another meeting. So that for people that are trying to follow along with this will be informed of what this is all about.
We, we can do that. We can have John give us a report.
I think that would be the way to go.
Yeah, we, we can do that. We can have John give us a report of the status and how it's going and, and the benefits for it. Like I say, I know we've been talking about this for a while. We have a little bit of advantage with more information than everybody out in the public, so. Do we have any more discussion on this before I call a vote? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne?
Yes, yes, yes.
Cindy, okay. Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan? Thumbs up from Mr. O'Regan, trustee O'Regan, Sandy Cooper?
Yeah.
Mark Burchard?
I see Mark twice.
Yeah.
This is dumb.
Okay. Next, uh, next we have, it's actually yes, okay, thank you. We'll be talking with you. I'm sure Chris and John will be going forward. And thank you for working with us. All right, next we have on the agenda, Lexi Poll Policy and Procedures. And again, we, we've been talking about this for a little bit. And it's for our police and our fire. It's basically online training and that will, it'll take place for our, our police and our fire rescue academies. Point as. This, this, this process or this, this program is so beneficial. I mean, it's not just, we're thinking about it. Our, our liability insurance carrier is, is offering to pay 25% of the bill for, for this to go forward. I think the numbers that you have in front of you, the 25% is represented in the police number, but not in the fire number. Mike?
25% is paid off of both of those.
Are they? Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, so it is a, those are the numbers that the township would be paying for. Chief Coach, do you want to take it away?
Can you hear me there?
Um, we can, I think so. I can hear you.
You got me there? No?
You're just, you're just very computerized.
Talk slow.
Okay. Yeah, I hear. I'll try and call in.
All right, give us a call. Do you need the number?
Yeah.
On the agendas. Artie, can I mute everyone when we're stopped at cam?
I'm muted everybody but Mike. Hear me? So we're going to hear, hear me?
I hear you, Mike. I don't know who G, G7 Thing, Thing Q is. Yes.
I think that's
Fuck.
Can you hear me, Artie?
Yes. Mike, are you in your office?
Here. No.
We're not picking you up, Mike.
Yeah, let me do anything.
Let me ask the board this question. Are you comfortable enough to go ahead with this? Or we can postpone this to our, our June 30th, but I mean, this is with, with the environment that's going on, I mean, with the police, this is a big time train. Hang on, Mike's calling me. Hey, Mike. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking. Can people hear Mike? Go ahead and talk, Mike.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Can you guys hear him? Yeah.
What we need to remind everybody is that
is that this call procedures and something have been worked for six months.
Right. Hang on one second. So, so basically we've been working on this for six months and revamping all the policies and procedures for the police. And another thing that it does, the, and it's also for the fire department. Each individual officer or fireman has, have to log in, take a, watch a video, take a test. And, and we have it registered. Yes, they, they saw the training, they passed the test and so it, it kind of covers us as a township and that's why their insurance company is so much in favor with this. This outfit Lexi Poll, this is all they do and they, they have the most up to date policies and procedures in place and training. And it's what else, Mike? What am I forgetting?
No, I think you're pretty much covering it, but you know, this is something that been wanting to do some time now and, and we've gotten to that point. And it's that I, I think is something critical, you know, both departments in bringing going on now and maybe seeing more and more of these policy changes and things coming out because of recent events that this keeps us on top of it. We've got nothing but a team of attorneys that specialize in justice.
Now that, pretty soon we're going to have requirements for training. I know it hasn't hit yet, but that's going to be another thing, like so many hours a year. And this will, will, will satisfy that, this coming down the pipe too. Am I correct, Mike?
That is correct. This is something that was going to keep us in front of everything.
Something that was going to keep us in front of, basically it's new. This is where we want to be sitting.
Okay.
I have a question. I think you can hear me now. Mr. Martin, can you hear me? Every we couldn't touch this prior statement if we're doing it on our own.
Right, okay, thanks. Mark, did you have a question?
How does this, what we've been doing for the training?
Mike, there is a question of how, how does this compare what we've been doing in, in before?
Well, like anything else, you know, the more
you know, the more training this is something that is on a continual basis. Let's face it. I mean, we don't have the manpower that we build and putting people through training and putting the kind of hours in that you can get in with this becomes real part of their shifts. Something that they do while they're on duty. So it's ongoing. And the other thing, it's always documented. So it is something as far as takes care of us. You know, to, you know, in case of any litigation or anything like that. Okay, Mike, you said, you said the man word, Kenny. Continually training.
It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody hear me? Yep. Okay, is the board comfortable going forward with this? If so, I Yep, I'll make a motion that we accept the Lexi Poll proposal for both fire and police. And also noting that our insurance carrier, nickel and staff is willing to pay 25% of the total cost of this. And do I have a second or support? Okay, we have support.
Support.
All right, I'm not sure if we have any discussion, any more discussion. If you can, we can bring it up as you vote. This is frustrating. Roll call vote, please.
Just a point, I would hold on, Artie.
Okay.
A discussion. If, if possible, I would like to have someone on to do follow up with the fire department and the police department on this, on this proposal and proposal of training.
We're, we're
To get more in depth with it. I support the whole thing.
Okay, Mark, I'm planning on bringing this back up for just informational discussion and the water meters. For informational discussion.
Right.
To get it out there, okay? I'm, I'm trying to be upfront as most possible and like I say, this is a frustrating meeting. So I, and, but on the other hand, we got to conduct business. We got a lot of business going on. With that being said, roll call vote, please, on the Lexi Poll proposals.
Joanne, sure. Joanne says yes. Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton? Where are you going? Move, dummy. Did we get a thumbs up?
Yes. Mark? Mark?
Sandy?
Yes.
All right, Sandy did give a, she's also texting me, she's having problems with her audio as well. In addition, Mark Rashard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, on 14, under fire, we have officer appointment. I will make the motion just to speed things up a little bit and make it a little easier. That we accept the officer's appointment recommended by the chief for Captain Elder and Captain Huber, Lieutenant Trues, and Sergeant Carr.
Be Captain Elder.
Support.
And Lieutenant Tews.
Yes. And Mark Rashard supported.
Got it. I think it's important to point out, these, you know, they went through the process that we had set up with the union to come up these candidates. They also had to apply and pass tests, but this is the process that the union had negotiated with us to, to go through.
Yes.
Union comply.
And Rick Adler is remaining as captain, Bill Hubner is being elevated to captain, Eric Trues to lieutenant, and Chris Carr to sergeant. So, sounds like a pretty good command staff to me. So, do we have motion and support?
Yes.
We, we have motion and support. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm opening up for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call all in favor of the above appointment, signified by saying yes, or give me a thumbs up. See, Crystal? Joanne?
Yes.
We got everyone.
Okay, motion passes. And also, we're gonna bring them to our next meeting too, so everyone can see them, and maybe we can embarrass them. 15, on the agenda on your new business is fireworks approval for 8315 South Channel. This is on July 3rd. I will make a motion that we approve the special permit for fireworks July 3rd at 8315 South Channel Drive.
Support.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye, or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have fireworks approval for 3230 South Channel on July 4th, 2020. And if it's raining, the rain date will be July 5th, 2020. That is a motion that we give a special fire permit for this address on July 4th, and we have support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the fireworks special permit for 3230, signified by affirmative by saying yes, or give me a thumbs up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We got everybody.
We got everybody, okay. Next, before I, I wanna open it up for public comments again, do we, do we have any more, any public comments? Do, do we have any public comments?
Unmute him.
I'm, well, I'm unmuted everybody, but they've, they gotta unmute themselves too. Is there any public?
All right, my name is Leslie, I'm a, actually a property owner on an out island, and recently, it came up during a zoning board meeting, um, the designation between a front yard property. At the time that issue was brought up, it was, it was not discussed, so I wanna actually, I'm asking, how do I get it on the agenda for the next zoning meeting, so that topic comes up?
Okay, Leslie, do you have a, a address?
Yes, 8180 Snibor.
Okay, that is handled through the planning commission. Unfortunately, it's not our board, and if you wanna, if you wanna give me an email or contact me, I will make sure that you get in, in communication with the planning board on that, on that topic.
Okay, so the topic has already come up, so my concern is just that it'll be addressed as a letter from a resident, and, and I would like it to actually be on the agenda for discussion.
Right, and that, that's at the planning commission, that's not on this board, it's a different board, it's the planning commission. And so, we can make, I can give you their agenda, you can come to their meeting, address them personally, do whatever what you, what you wanna do. I, I know that has been brought up in the past, and in the most recent past, and it's an issue that they are talking about. If you wanna shoot me an email, it's supervisor, it's supervisor@claytownship.org, O-R-G, all spelt out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get it to the right spot, too.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? All right, board member comments. Cindy Valentine?
Well, good for the world. Um, we start, we received some of our ballots today, um, so we're hoping to have them mailed out by the end of the week. Um, so if you requested an absentee ballot, it should be coming in the mail next, um, hopefully, we've received enough of them to send them all out. Our numbers are quite higher than we had anticipated. Actually, double that we had anticipated because of the state sending out options for the absentee ballots, um, so if you do not receive your ballot next week, it should be coming shortly behind that when we get our dispatch of ballots in. And I wanted to say congratulations to all of our promoted fire department officers.
Yes.
That's all.
All right, how about you, Mark?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the conversation with the police department and the fire department on the new program they have being rolled out as far as communication is concerned, and congratulations to the newly appointed officers as well, and to let you know that the planning commission is on June 24th, 7:00 PM. Hopefully, it'll be in the offices, but we'll see.
It will be.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Joanne?
Couple things, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, one that I think is, and I enjoyed, I was driving through the town of Algonak to see all the wonderful banners of our graduates. I made a special trip to, and looked at that, I thought that was wonderful. So, but a lot of them are down now, they must have taken them for souvenirs. And then this, this other things, I wanted to be sure, the next meetings, it, like Mark said, I wanna know more about Lexa poll, I wanna, that report from Mike and from the chief, and, cause I have a few comments I'd like to make on that, and also with the water meters. I wanna hear, hear more about that, just, just for the voters of this community that they understand what's going on, because this sure was a mess tonight.
Oh, boy.
That's it, but
All right, thank you. Um, Sandy, are you still with us?
I am, I'm good, I don't have any comments this evening.
All right, thank you. Chris? Pull it up higher.
Safety.
That's right. Chrissy, are you done, Chris? Yeah, he's muted. Chrissy?
I just wanna say good luck to dispatcher McCorny and his retirement, and thank you for your years of service. And I also wanna say that the summer tax bills will be mailed out June 29th. They're payable beginning July 1st. Make sure you look at the back of your bill, there's a lot of good information on the back.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to end it up with also big congratulations to Pat McCorny, he will be missed, he's got over 30 years in, in, in the township. He, he's almost a dinosaur, just kidding, Pat, and he will be missed. Congratulations to the command staff, um, I'm so positive, I mean, things are I'm, I'm just thrilled to death, and they're gonna help our chief out a lot, and I, I see a lot of good things coming from the, the command staff going forward. And again, I, I boy, the past few weeks has been really frustrating, and frustrating for anybody in public, public safety, and I, this is from me personally, I, from the bottom of my heart, I give all the support we can to our, to our public safety people, our police, our firemen, tri hospital, it's everybody in the whole field, in the hospital, everyone. It's, it's, it's been a trying atmosphere, to say the least, and our next meeting will be in public. Thank God, and this, this is probably the most frustrating meeting I have ever had. I'm sorry for the, the quality of the sound, um, I don't know what's going on, we always had good luck in past, but I'd like to thank the board too, it's frustrating with you guys, and we have a lot of important decisions we made tonight, and like I say, we're going forward with lots of, lots of positive stuff amidst our environment, you know, we huge step today, County Beach Park, huge step. And my own personal thanking now, we have our, our Clay Township Park with the splash pad. We, we got the kayak and the nature park on Harson's Island, that land that we have to develop, and we have the beach park secured, the property is secured, and I think we have enough parks, we just gotta develop these parks, make them first class. And like we did with the splash pad next to the office, you know, everything we've done in there was, was first class, and people recognize it, they see it, they respect it, and they take care of the park themselves, and they use it. That splash pad was so busy the past two, past week, it was incredible, and it warms my heart. And the same thing, you know, eight years I've been working on trying to cut a deal for, and a location for this beach park property, and it, it happened today. We looked at probably three different other locations, but we kept on coming back to this one, this is the best spot for it, this, the best spot for it, and I'm just really, really, um, happy about it, and I think it's gonna be a, a big jewel for the township for years and years to come. So, yes, onward and upward, and thank you for coming. Entertained, one more motion, Joanne? Motion to adjourn, thanks a lot, everybody, and I, I know it's a frustrating meeting, and, but thanks for sticking it out. Everyone be safe.
Thank you, Artie, you too.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you next time.
In person.